This is the Wapaka School District Board of Education meeting.
Okay, we'll go without, I'm not going to be a lot of help in monitoring who might be asking a comment or question. Okay, with that, considering the time, it is now 5:15, we will get started. Start with, as we always have, President comments. As always, thank you everyone very much for making time to join us this evening. Very much appreciate it. I wish I could acknowledge who was here, but since I can't get into my computer and I can't read that screen, I won't do that. Would like to extend the board's sincere thanks to our teachers for everything they've been doing with the Disconcerning Administration and the other members of the core team that have made this a reality, and IT who has done a fabulous job, other than I can't get on the internet here right now. It's been a long run in many ways, in a very short time, and everybody should be commended on the role that they've played. And a thank you to the parents and families for becoming teachers. We realize that it's probably been a challenge. I've seen many things on social media, some of the things some people are doing, very creative in the way that they're engaging their children during this time. But we also realize there are others that this presents a real challenge to, depending on schedules, depending on what classes a student may be involved in. I can tell you, I would not be able to be a significant help to my children with their online courses for school, whether it was in high school or as they are now in schools beyond secondary. So our hats are off to the parents, guardians, and families for everything they're doing. And once again, as I've said before, thank you to Food Services for everything that they've been doing to support our students and the community. With that, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That'll call the meeting to order, since I cannot see on the screen who is here, we will take roll call.
Do you have that?
Here.
Stephanie Manion?
Here.
Pat there?
Here.
Mark Holminsky?
Here.
Andy Robinson?
Here.
Dale Belt?
Here.
And Steve Johnson?
Here. Okay, with that, look for motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
That was second by Sandy?
Yes, and Betty.
Any questions or corrections? There being none, I'll call the question. Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Manion?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Mark Holminsky?
Yes.
Andy Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Belt?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to the meeting norms. I hope everybody got the email that I sent earlier today, we will rotate through these. If somebody did not get that and did not have the norms visual, let me know. I will start with our first norm, which is be prepared, stay informed, listen to others, and be open to differing opinions and perspectives. Be inquisitive, reflective, and respectful. Checking biases and agendas at the door. We will thoughtfully and objectively discuss the facts of the situation and not personalize issues or problems.
Number two. Ensure open and clear communications and maintain transparency. No surprises.
Number three. Remain objective, forward-thinking, and open-minded, and respect the opinions of others.
Am I number four? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Maintaining professional relationships is key. Know and respect the roles and responsibilities of the board governing administration, tactical, and staff operational.
Number five. Start on time, end on time, stay on task.
Number six. When a board decision is made, we accept and abide by the decision both and privately. We can't reunite it then divided.
Number seven. Honor and protect the expectations of confidentiality of all topics addressed and discussions held in closed sessions.
Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. I will start with the April 14th, 2020 regular board meeting. Is there a motion?
So motion to approve?
Motion by Steve Hackett, second by Dale. Any discussion? I'll do a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, motion passes. April 16th, special board meeting. Is there a motion?
Fair.
So motion.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? There being none, voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Very good, motion passes. The April 27th, special organizational board meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Steve Hackett with a motion, two seconds. Any discussion? Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Anyone abstaining? Very good, motion passes, thank you. We'll move on to communications. Ron?
Yeah, we have a few things that we want to notice right away at the beginning. May is National Mental Health Awareness Month, so this month is National Mental Health Awareness. School Nutrition Employee Week was last week, and Teacher Appreciation Week was also last week, and on Wednesday of last week was National School Nurses Day. As far as a district administrator's report, just three things. The first is strategic planning. We had talked last month about doing some strategic planning this month, and with everything that's going on, we just couldn't add it to our plate. So we're hoping next month, the month of June, that we're able to do this. The core team has been having communications with Dennis Polly, he's the superintendent of Edgerton, and he has some experience with this and is interested and willing to lead us and facilitate that process. We're hoping that the first meeting would be somewhere in the week of June 29th. So it's a little bit in advance, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. Prior to that first meeting, we will also be individually completing what's called the Five Voices Assessment. And then we'll be learning a little bit about that, and it's very similar to a personality type of assessment so that everybody gets to know everybody. As far as the committee selection, we're looking at having the entire board as a part of it, our core team, each of the head principals, and then four staff, one from each building, and four parents, one from each building, two community leaders, and then CEC governance council members. So it will be 27 people that we're going to have strategic planning committee. We're going to evaluate a variety of sets of data, especially the school perceptions data, that will be the student survey results, staff, the parent survey results, as well as district academic data. Each of the meetings, we're anticipating six meetings, and each would be about two hours in length. However, it is possible if we are interested, we could do maybe a morning, and that would knock out two meetings at once, or we could do a full day that could possibly knock out three or four meetings. Each of the meetings are already mapped out, and they'll involve tasks, small group activities, and assignments. It's come to our attention that there are different parts of our stakeholder group and our community that are not aware of the rationale behind how we came to the determination to have a virtual graduation. So I just want to take a minute and just kind of read over something that you folks have already been exposed to, but our community will not have, that we know the value and importance of working with our entire community, including but not limited to our local law enforcement departments, public health representatives from King Veterans Home, as well as city and county officials to ensure that our actions don't place any of our community members at risk. Using this valuable network of community leaders has been and will continue to be a great asset to our decisions surrounding social gatherings such as graduation. As we shared all previously, our plan is to have some sort of graduation while we know it will be a virtual graduation on Sunday, May 31st. At the time the message was originally shared, our top ceremony consideration was a drive-in style graduation, believing that we could ensure the safety of our graduates and attendees through tight expectations such as abiding by the six-foot social distancing requirements. We believe that the drive-in would, we believe that a drive-in graduation in May, followed by something more traditional in August, would be the answer. However, we learned that school districts are not allowed to have any type of activities on school grounds through June 30th. We've also since collaborated with additional health county officers who've put out further guidelines not to condone any sort of large gathering, even if there's strict expectations. And speaking with local law enforcement, along with public health officials, as well as our various city and county officials, we collectively came to the conclusion that any sort of large gathering, especially for our students who've not physically seen each other for several weeks and months, poses too big of a risk for our community. We've also since consulted with our insurance carrier and legal counsel who concur that we've made the right decision. So reflecting back on the previous information that we gathered from students and parents, we again met with our community partners, professional networks, discussing how we can still provide the class of 2020 with the best graduation ceremony possible. Mr. Warbowski also met again with representatives of the senior class. In the end, having a May 31st virtual graduation followed up, hopefully with an August 9th more traditional type of ceremony seemed like the best, the most supportive, and safest way to celebrate our class of 2020. We don't know what the Safe at Home orders will be on August 9th, and we're keeping our fingers crossed that by then the restrictions will change and we'll be allowed to once again hold large social gatherings. Mike, in your packet, you'll see the next memo that Mr. Warbowski provided in regards to a detailed listing of all of the pieces that are included and being planned by the high school for graduation. And if you will, I'll read it to you. "The school district of Wapaka is very proud of the class of 2020. Seniors have excelled in academics, leadership in clubs and organizations, sports, and community service. Staff have worked hard to recognize our seniors while staying within the COVID-19 Safe at Home orders and guidelines. Wapaka high school staff members are not only proud of the accomplishments of our seniors, this year they're planning to celebrate their achievements in a variety of ways. The first is by the making of 2020 graduate-making history, yard signs, which highlight the senior class picture, which was taken on Comet Field in the form of a W, and were given out already to all of our seniors displaying their yards. A Class of 2020 senior slideshow is being created, which features a senior picture, each student's name, and their future plans. The slideshow will be displayed on a six-foot by nine-foot digital sign at the high school campus starting the week of May 25th. Just as in previous years, our seniors will be honored in the Wapaka County post in May with the senior class photos. The finale, the grand finale, is the professionally done virtual graduation ceremony that is scheduled for Sunday, the 31st of May at 2 o'clock. Seniors will be recognized individually with a photo in their cap and gown. That was the expectation, however, not all of the students followed through of taking that picture in their cap or gown. A 10-second video of themselves thanking the ones who have impacted their educational journey, and a personal message as well, will be included. The graduation will also include speeches from the valedictorians, the salutatorians, the Board of Education president, the school administration. And Mr. Warbowski informed us today that all of those speeches are completed and uploaded to the vendor, Herb Jones. Music will be incorporated from the Wapaka High School band and choir, along with pictures of seniors involved in activities at WHS throughout this past year. The virtual graduation ceremony will be streamed, it'll be livestreamed, for families and the community to view at the same time. Seniors will also receive a recorded version of the graduation as a keepsake. In addition to those, because, you know, I'm new and I'm learning, the tradition has been a senior walk, and the staff has taken it upon themselves to create a virtual senior walk for our seniors. It'll be a video from each grade level through graduation to share with seniors. And then, of course, we mentioned it's also important, hopefully we can have the in-person style graduating ceremony on Sunday, August 9th, if the guidelines allow for that. We'll try to share some of this information out again on the city radio station and on WDUX if we're able to on Thursday, just so more people are made aware of the rationale behind why, as well as all the efforts that the high school is doing to celebrate our graduates. Anybody have any questions? That was quite a bit.
Ron, I have one. Will the, a listing of scholarships that the students earned be also listed on the video?
That's a possibility, we can check with Mr. Warbowski and see. I know they are getting a letter in the mail notifying them.
Right, we're going to do that after May 21st, for the foundation said that, and Mr. Dulsky is working on that, I believe.
Speaking of senior recognition, for those that have not seen it, I would refer you to the special message that was posted in Facebook by Charlie Barons, AKA The Manitowoc Minute, through the assistance, if you will, of Mr. Dulsky to get that done. I would encourage you to share that with your students, if anybody listening has not yet seen it.
Yeah, that's cool.
Okay, anything else that you have for the communications?
In effort to be timely, I could talk and talk, Mr. President, I'm going to just say leave it at that.
Okay, we'll move to monitoring with the teacher showcase.
Yeah, we have a video here, so Mark is pulling up, and we're going to go through them.
So at each May school board meeting, we ask a few teachers to provide our community with a snapshot of something great happening in our classrooms. Although the last several weeks of school this year have been anything but routine, we can again continue with this tradition. And so here are four videos from each, one video from each of our buildings. So we'll just let these go here.
It's Letter B Week, and we're on our way to Vietnam for a vacation to see the volcanoes. See you soon. My mother and I love food. It's volcano day, and "me" is for volcano.
Oh, hi, I can see you there.
Even a grocery, watch us!
Good evening, Wapaka. Tonight we investigate plastic pollution, but first to today's headlines. Retired Greenway Wapaka legend, Jody Nelson, legally changed his name to Mr. Belt and started a new career as an elementary school teacher at CEC.
That was from the CEC chain, let's head over to the WLC.
This is a challenging time for all students, parents, teachers, and administrations, so I wanted to bring some good news and success to the topic. My name is Matt Lonzo, and I teach elementary art at the WLC. When we started this journey in March, I planned on teaching techniques and drilling fundamentals and principles in what would be an online lecture format. After the first week, I was bored, and the required turning in of assignments was less than 5%. Week two went by, and John and Jody came to all the related arts teachers and told us to hold off for a week, let the parents get a hang of the online learning, and to focus on classroom subjects. I remember all the related arts teachers looking at one another like John and Jody were telling us that what we were teaching was not important. We soon reminded that this was factually true. The reality of distance learning is different in every household, whether families are involved or not, some with the added stress of working full-time on top of non-meaning teachers. Each situation has challenges, and John and Jody knew the struggles the families were having. I changed my mindset and way of teaching on week three. I decided to use art to lighten the tension and bring families together. First, I removed the requirement for assignments to be turned in. Second, I thought about how can I take stress off the families overwhelmed with new technology and hours in front of the screen. Third, John talked about equity and how we shouldn't be using something that not every student has access to. These three things shaped the next three weeks of lessons and have completely changed my attitude towards online learning and my role right now as a teacher. My lessons are family-centered and encourage students to use problem-solving, group work, and manipulation of materials. All three are based off of art standards I would teach in my classroom. The only difference is that the students are not learning by lecture and demonstration, but by doing. In the first two weeks of distance learning, I would get emailed images of the lesson with no message other than the student's name. Once lessons became fun and family-centered, I started getting pictures with students, or sometimes the whole family, and behind the work of art with smiling faces. Messages accompanied artwork and talked about how much fun the student and family have trying to figure out and create a lesson. I removed the requirement to share lessons with me after the third week. Since then, I am at 60% or more turned in or emailed shared with students and teaching things I would never be able to teach in the classroom because of lack of materials, which is funny because all I could think about was the lack of materials the students had at home than this all began. Laundry Art, the endangered animal edition, and Tell Me About Yourself in One Word are both lessons that used found objects around the house and encouraged students to create a piece with materials that have to be manipulated in order to be successful. Families are doing these assignments together as a way to unwind from busy days. I noticed because the emails expressed the joy they are having doing something different. This is my story. I sit in Zoom meetings every day with different grade levels, and we are an amazing district with teachers that are working far beyond the 7:30 to 3:30 requirement. We all worked longer than required before, but now we are, our computers lying for the night. We spend weekends trying to find new technology platforms or trying to become stronger and more familiar with the ones that we are using. We make phone call after phone call trying to reach students that we have not heard from. I've watched teachers tear up over the lack of ability to reach a student. This isn't easy for anyone, but I work with some amazing people, and this challenging time has fortunately allowed me to work even closer with them than before. It is not ideal for anyone, but I know this will make a stronger meaning. Thank you for listening to my story and allowing me to share some of the positive aspects that have come out of this piece of learning. Thank you.
Moving on to the middle school?
Hi, everyone, my name is Dana Kupler. I'm a teacher in our district for fifth grade. And I have, my husband and I have four children in our school district, ranging from senior in high school all the way down to 4K. So to say the least, this switch to virtual school has been a challenge, but today I'd like to talk to you about how we have adapted our teaching as well as prioritize in order to continue affecting students, all while maintaining those relationships we built throughout the school year. So today, I want to show you just an example of how I've virtually switched teaching to an online format. So here you see a typical assignment set up in Google Classroom, so many people have transitioned to Google Classroom. All of my classes are on there. The biggest thing with virtual teaching I found is, thank goodness, if this all happened at a time where our students already knew our routine. And so going into a virtual format, I wanted to maintain that routine for the students. So each of my lessons is posted as it would be posted in the classroom, meaning I have the learning target, the intention or purpose for our learning, and what we're doing today. With ELA, we use a workshop model, which means we start with a mini lesson. So each of So each of, each lesson has a link of me explaining or teaching a mini lesson. So in this mini lesson, they're learning about cohesion within their ethic. Then they go into trying it themselves, just like they would in the classroom. I found that many examples definitely help students. So in this case, they were given a student example. They were also given my example. And so the more examples you can give to them, the better, without overloading. Simple is better when it comes to virtual learning. How we give feedback is a variety of ways. One, you can go write on documents in classroom and give feedback. So here is a paper that has some nice feedback. And we also do many flip grids that I'll show you in a moment here, and then you can have a recorded feedback style. And in that, we also like to do our video conferencing with students where you can see them face-to-face virtually and give some feedback, just kind of gauging where they're at in their understanding in that way. It's pretty powerful because it mimics that one-on-one conversation we would have in the classroom. Another piece of online learning that we need to really prioritize is the targets and how we assess those targets. So assessment can be tricky because it's what does that child know independently? So it is difficult to know how much independence. So we have to be creative in ways that we can make sure that children are being the most independent they can be when it's an assessment situation. So we've communicated this to parents as much as possible, but we continue to look at those learning targets. So here it's structuring your writing, so that's exactly what they would be assessed on. So one, one way that I really enjoy getting an assessment, somewhat of a de-formal assessment on a student, is flip grid. Flip grid, you can kind of see their space. You can see if there's people around them, and you can tell who is doing the talking. So here's a fun example of how we assess in science a modeling target, where they were able to model for me how Earth, Moon, and the Sun all work together in movement around each other. This is the senior family showing their. I love this example of modeling. You can tell that the student here is doing the talking. She has set up her family members to model the movement. It's getting the whole family involved, and I was easily able to assess her as proficient in modeling using the vocabulary and the correct concepts there. So a fun example of how we are assessing. So this is, again, just another way you can assess. Our, our district has provided us some really excellent online options for education as well. So for science, we use a program called Ed Your Friend in Learning. So the students were able to take an online assessment, and I was able to grade it and then determine where they were at on those concepts and practices. But all of this really takes a backseat right now to mental health. So all those pieces are important, but the mental health piece is certainly something that we need to continue to focus on. Those relationships we built in our classrooms are extremely important right now. So we have been starting each week with a morning reg or bummer. So a virtual meeting where students can tell us about their weekend. We reach out to students. We always start with, "How are you?" We've also been reaching out to parents and keeping documented logs on how much we're reaching out, and basically just saying, "We're here for you. How are you?" Great feedback that way. But one of my favorite ways to continue building classrooms, in my personal classroom, is with something called our Friday stuffy animal dance parties. So at 1 o'clock in the afternoon on Fridays, we get together, we celebrate the best parts of our week. If anyone wants to share any challenging parts of their week. Mrs. Ash often comes in and we do some exercises, and then I turn on a thong and we dance with our stuffy animals, of course. So again, through this all, we've learned to adapt, just like the rest of the world. We have learned to prioritize, which is so important in a time like this, and we continue to build those relationships. Again, thank you for letting me share how my classroom has gone virtual, and thank you again for all of your support through all of this.
And finally, last but not least, our tech school.
My name is Jessica, along with Michael Teacherski, my English teacher at the school. I've opted for the years and years, but we're freshmen. Very good to meet you. Pass over the weeks I've gone on a change, forcing people all over the world. I've heard students whose reactions to digitalism. Many teachers' reactions range all the way from overwhelming distress, trying to manage our new jungle, to our ultimately little break in our routine. Middle of your pain to our life. Going to share with you the things I feel that have changed, things that have shifted, and the things that have remained the same while teaching in the midst of a pandemic. First and foremost, our physical space has changed. Our classrooms are now our dining rooms, kitchens, spare bedrooms on vacation all Sunday day, the backyard. Our work neighbors have changed. Many of us now share our workspace with toddlers, not children or teenagers. The microwave fish bones, they have milestones during meetings, and they're trying to navigate everything. Our to-do lists have changed. Our work hours have changed. I try and grade one more batch of assignments before bed, which usually comes too late. We find ourselves working on the Saturday morning more frequently than normal, and we're trying to adapt lesson plans to move digitally in the early hours of the morning. Our engagement with students has changed. We can't call the student down from study hall or catch up with them in the hall. We can't. We can send them maybe requests, and we can hope they show up. And when they don't, we can think of other ways to try and connect with them. Our P L C focus has shifted. We spend more time discussing how to support and engage our students and how we can work together to help one be successful. Our classroom focus has shifted. While we still place a strong focus on academics, I believe many staff members are making a concerted effort to focus on the student as a whole. My personal philosophy that if students are not loved, we can't expect them to perform well academically. I think many staff are emphasizing the message that above all, we do. Despite the fears, the frustrations, the tears, and yes, there have been tears, our common staff still continues to put our students first. Continue to reflect on our practice, and we continue to do the best we can, and we keep looking forward. Thank you.
So again, I want to give thanks to those staff members who contributed to that, and there was a lot of our staff members. All of our staff members are working tirelessly to continue with learning, and we appreciate all that they do. There's no recommendations associated. This was just an informational memo. I thought it would be good for us to share during this, during this time.
Thank you very much. I think seeing some of these types of things are perhaps one of the more rewarding things and enjoyable things that you can possibly bring to the board. So thank you, and thank you for those that did indeed contribute, and all those that are doing things similar and/or having feelings that are similar to what we're discussing through our district. Very much appreciated. With that, we have our upcoming meetings and other activities. May 15th, we have a personnel committee meeting at 9:30 a.m. May 31st, the virtual graduation. June 1st, the school board C E C governance council retreat. And June 9th, our next regular board meeting. With that, we'll move on in the agenda to the instructional committee.
Yep, thanks, Steve. The instructional committee met on April 27th at 1:30, and our goal there was to discuss the cell phone guidelines that have been helping, happening in the high school and the middle school. And our report was from Ms. Earp and Mr. Robowski, and they told us that the cell phone policy were, for the first year, they, they explained to us how many kids did not follow the guidelines and how many students did, and that they would like to add in that they really are trying to make this an education for the kids. And so instead of getting in trouble when they have an incident, they sit down with the kids, even though their cell phones are confiscated, but they teach them why they're doing, why we're doing what we're doing with the cell phone policy. Having kids not use the cell phones during classroom time unless the teacher needs it for some kind of lesson. So even in our second or third incidents that happened, if a student has used, has been caught with the cell phone a second or third time, now the parents and the administrators sit down with the student, explain to them why it is important to learn when and when not to use their cell phone. The middle school said, they reported that, it was Mr. Martin, I believe it was, reported that, oh, Mr. Myers, sorry about that. And Laura said that they were at first a little skeptical when the policy was first put in. They thought they were going to have some trouble, but they said, "No, the kids adapted quite well, and they've been doing very well with learning how to use a cell phone and not using it at appropriate times." So they have very low incident rate of kids using it when they're not supposed to. Okay, so that took care of the cell phone part of it. Then we learned from Mr. Tomaszewski about a learning management system that's being looked at, and that is so that, I believe, if I remember right, so that all the notes, documents, curriculum, videos, and assessments can all be put in one place for a classroom, and that way a student can go and find what they've missed or what this teacher needs them to see. And we adjourned at 2:29 after that.
Thank you very much, Dale. There is nothing that the committee is bringing forward to the board other than the report, then? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is, excuse me, I gotta find the agenda. The Cost Decreases and Increases Report. Mr. Hayek, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. The two items that are on this agenda, the health insurance renewal and the cost decreases and increases report, I believe, you know, are very good news for this district. The cost decreases and increases report, Rich, if you view this spreadsheet, I'll try to explain this spreadsheet just for your viewing. The following spreadsheet shows cost increases and cost decreases, and the interrelationship of dependence, both Fund 27 and Fund 50 have upon Fund 10. These three major district funds, Fund 10, the general fund, Fund 27, the special education fund, and Fund 50, the district's food service operations fund, must be looked at collectively financially to consider a district's budgetary bottom line. As you're aware, Fund 27, the special education fund, receives only about one-third of its revenues from federal and state dollars each year for mandated, and I want to emphasize for mandated instructional programs. This budget, Fund 27, must balance at the end of each year. So therefore, each year, what is termed an operating transfer by the Department of Public Instruction occurs from Fund 10 in the amount of the Fund 27 shortfall. Fund 10 literally expenses on the books this amount. And this graph that you're shown, Fund 10 has incorporated all these shortfalls and is still coming up well above revenues over expenditures. So I want everybody to be aware of this, though, as well. This is true of all school districts in the state of Wisconsin with regard to Fund 27. All school districts, this is not alone. We budget for the operating transfer. This year, we budgeted about 2.6 million. It's coming, right at this snapshot in time, it's coming in under, but we have, we have two months to go truly, to really get the correct number. The same process occurs if Fund 50 has a budget shortfall. So in October of 2019, the board approved budgetary fiscal projections anticipating approximately adding 113,000 more in revenues in Fund 10 than expenses at the fiscal year in June 30th, 2020. So last week, on May 7th, 2020, I took a snapshot, and my revised estimate shows the district exceeding this dollar amount by about $180,000 to now $293,000 revenue over expenses. So truly, in an overall $32 million budget, this variance is less than 1%. This number, I just want to caution everybody, this number would change, and the district has two months of bill, seven teacher payrolls, and three support staff payrolls left, and the year isn't over. But really, truly, right now, the bottom line looks very well for this district. And if you look at the spreadsheet itself, you can see what I'm speaking to. Fund 27, certainly that number may frighten everybody. It doesn't frighten me. It's in a good position. We budgeted higher than that amount, and right now the snapshot shows about $2.3 million shortfall that absorbed in my projections in Fund 10. It's also showing, we know we have food service operations still going. We, I think today at our continuing learning meeting, it showed that we served over 18,000 meals so far. So the Fund Food, Food Service Fund is taking a hit, but collectively, when you have 3,000 accounts in Fund 10 alone, there's ebbs and flows. No budget is exactly going to end up where it's at. It's a plan. It's a financial plan. So we're really pretty in good shape, but we have two months to go yet. So I wanted to at least get that to you this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hayek. Are there any questions?
Steve, this is Sandy. I, I don't have a question, but, but thank you, Carl, for mentioning several times that we did budget for the Fund 27. I don't even want to refer to it as a shortfall. It just is an anticipated annual expense, and we budgeted sufficiently, it looks like, for it, and even more than sufficiently. So thank you for, for emphasizing that.
You're welcome.
This is Pat. I, I just have one question. How are we in terms of our capital improvement projects that we had lined up, thinking of the roofing project, et cetera? Are we still moving forward with those, or are some of those on hold?
No, we're still moving forward with those, and they're incorporated, good question, Pat, into this projection.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mark, you got a question?
Yeah, I, I posted it on there. So Carl, you mentioned that this is happening in other districts as well, that they're seeing the surplus of money. What's the potential that the folks in Madison are going to pick up on this and say, "Hey, they're, they're doing this, so we're going to hold back our funds next year"? I mean...
Well, I, I think it's twofold, Mark, that's a good question as well. What we're anticipating going, going forward is that there's talks, cutting budgets 10% for the school districts, reducing categorical aid, maybe special education funds. So that, I didn't, that operation transfer could rise if indeed the government or the legislature decides to reduce categorical funding in the world of special education. But we're, we're preparing, we're preparing for next year at the same time we're planning out this year. So I think we'll be okay, but we have to keep our eye on the ball. That's a great question. I'm not sure I answered the question, Mark, looking at your face. Did I?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the health insurance update.
You know, first, before I even start, I really need to, you know, we began the class about 10 years ago, and I really want to thank the Board of Education and, and the teachers and support staff who, who, you know, kind of believed in the process, including Dr. Pescher early on. He was taking a shot and trying a different methodology of getting health insurance renewals down for this district and for its second biggest portion of our budget. And I think truly, this graph explains a lot. If you look at the graph that's on this document, you can see that over this, since 2011, If you look at the graph that's on this document, you can see that over this, since 2011, since we began the Health Insurance Committee, we've had 12.1% reduction in our health insurance. Our health insurance costs for premiums are less than they were in 2011, and that's phenomenal. And during that time, WA came to us with percentage increases, and we negotiated, we worked hard, we worked with the Health Insurance Committee, and we're able to, their health insurance proposals that we negotiated down, we're able to negotiate down about $1.6 million. The actual savings then compared to the prior year was about $660,000 over this same period of time. If you look at other districts, and there's a graph at a 6%, just a simple 6% increase, their cost has gone up about $1.9 million. So that's a huge savings to this district. So in April 30th, 2020, the district's Health Insurance Committee met, and the renewal proposal from WA was discussed, and there was more disagreement with regard to accepting the final negotiated offer that which M3 and myself had negotiated, which is a reduction of 1%. I won't go through the whole narrative of the process, but I will say that the collectivism of this group, coming together, making decision for the Board of Education, because a lot of the members are on this committee, and a lot of them were former teachers too, makes this decision a win-win for the district. So we're the number one user of AMWAL, we have a great nurse, great nurses, Hannah and Jamie, and they work hard on this wellness committee. This isn't done, this wasn't done by me, this is done by the collective vision of looking at our second biggest ticket item and going after it. We look at the big picture, we look at the big areas of our budget that we need to tackle, and if we can reduce those, we can do other things. And that's what we've certainly done over the years. So my recommendation to the board is to approve this increase, there's no plan design changes, there's, it's a negative percent, 1% going forward. We're not having any dental insurance increases, again, and we're not having any LTD insurance increases, which keeps us especially now, going into unknown territory, going in with our health insurance renewal, at the next 1% is just phenomenal, and I just hope the board sees it the same way to renew this.
Okay, thank you very much. The insurance committee is not a formal subcommittee of the Board of Education, therefore, I would need a motion to approve the negotiated WEA, WEA Trust Health Insurance Renewal.
I would have to make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Hackett?
Second.
Second by Sandy Robinson. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to point out that over the years with the, I was one of the teachers that was on there, and not only has it been with all the neat things that our school nurses have done for the kids, or for the teachers and the staff, but also that there has been some changes in the policies themselves that have helped keep this all in check, meaning co-pays, co-insurance, et cetera.
Absolutely, and it was phenomenal to see teachers making those recommendations at the same time, so they've been such a big part of this, Dale.
If I could just make one comment, too, piggybacking on what Dale said there a little bit, there was a big article in the paper not too long ago about the pandemic situation that we, nationwide, and how the number of visits, well visits, hospital visits, emergency room visits, has all declined for a lot of reasons, without going into it. And as we also all have found out, most auto insurances are giving rebates because the number of cars and number of miles driven has gone way down, and consequently accidents and so forth. So I'm just a comment, and the article sort of implied that in the future, health insurances companies should be able to maintain without having real high increases because of the fact that fewer number of people are actually using the healthcare systems, at least for the last couple of months, and maybe going forward, and I know Carl hit it right on the head, we're moving into territory, we don't know, but it might be that this is sort of a sign of what may happen in the future, actually. Instead of continual rising costs, we may see some reductions.
Okay. Any other comments with regard to the motion?
Just one, Steve. Carl, thanks for getting that information out today on how some of the staff that aren't signed up on AMWAL yet can get signed up, and you know, I'm kind of urging them to do that, like, tonight, because it is an awful great tool to be able to see a doctor virtually.
Absolutely, and especially now.
Any other comments on the motion? Rokol?
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Betty Manuel?
Yes.
Seth Eric?
Yes.
Michael Binsky?
Aye.
Beth Robinson?
Yes.
Dale Bell?
Yes.
He's done.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Well, that will move on to the process to honor our retirees.
We do plan to honor our retirees, again, this year, as the school district of OPEC has done in previous years. We also plan to have an end-of-the-year celebration this year, except this year's will look a little different. It will be a virtual celebration. Typically, we would have a breakfast, but we can't do that at this point. We will be honoring our retirees, and there will be videos mashed together from their peers honoring each of them. We plan to use this as a promotional video for our new staff, showing off our professional culture that we're continuing to grow in our school district. Part of the cultures building in our district will be attributes showcasing positivity, professionalism, a growth mindset, collaboration, and teamwork, to name a few, and then recognizing their accomplishments by their peers. And we'll have some sort of a schedule together for you, similar to how it's been in the past, it'll obviously just be a little different. We'll have a welcome, we're going to ask our president to put together a few words congratulating our retirees. In the past few months, however, we decided to forego the usual individual awards that we would have, such as the Bink One Support Staff Recognition, the Rotary Service of Our Self, and the Volunteer of the Year. We will still continue this year with recognizing the staff that have earned 25 years of service as typical, so we just wanted to give you that heads up. That more information will be coming out as we continue to get closer to the end of the year.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the CEC print.
Is there a date for that?
Not yet, Betty, we'll communicate it out.
Thank you.
Typically, it's, it would be the last day of the teacher contract, it'd be Monday, June 8th.
Okay, thank you.
Since you were asking, we'll assume you'll be doing something for us, Betty.
Say that again?
Since you were asking, we'll assume you'll be doing something for us again this year.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for the update.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the CEC Transition Plan and Update.
So this was put together initially by myself, but then it came through the core team, and we've had lots of conversations, and I appreciate everybody's feedback on it. But based off the, I think it was May 4th, when the Governance Council and the Board of Education came together in that collaborative meeting. So based off your guys' feedback and inputs into that conversation, I put together this transition plan that talks about four key areas, the organizational chart aspect, the hiring process, expectations of support, and evaluation process. So this was emailed out to you, so I don't need to go through it all, but I do want to let you know that last week, Thursday, I did share this with the CEC Governance Council as well, and they had a suggestion or two, so this document reflects their suggestions in there as well. And again, this has been discussed with the district office core team here, Governance Council, and now it's into the hands of the Board of Education. So hopefully you've had a chance to review this document. And again, the whole purpose of this document is really just to help clarify some of the questions that were brought forth in that joint board and Governance Council meeting. So starting with the organizational chart, we just wanted to make sure everybody was aware that, you know, there is a contract between the school district of OPEC and the CEC Governance Council, that is important, so that's that kind of contractual line there, but also that the Governance Council Administrator continue to work with the district's core team, which is important as well, just like we would for each school building. So that is noted, and you know, it's a key foundational aspect, the organizational chart is how the CEC is similar to another district's school and its communication, collaboration, and expectations, of course. However, we also know that instructor provides a little bit difference, especially with the CEC being a charter school, and we want to make sure that we're helping in that sustainability and that planning of the CEC. So any questions with the organizational chart that's shown here?
I have one question. On the organizational chart, I'm just assuming, or maybe there's a reason why it was left off, under the CEC Administrator, would there not be a box that has other things in it like teachers and aides that the CEC Administrator, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be for all of our principals, correct.
Okay, so there would be another box that would be there. This is a little nitpicky, but how does it work with the food service, for example, that crosses between the two where the food service is under the Director of Business Services, but there's a food service person out at the chain, for example, and there might be other examples of that as well?
Well, remember, all CEC employees are employees of the school district of OPEC first and foremost. So whether you're talking about food service and nursing, you know, for the general part of it, that's where we put it underneath the school district of OPEC, because the CEC is an entity of the school district of OPEC. And so there are certain things within that contract that have to be spelled out that would relate to differences, such as they get a little more freedom and flexibility with their curriculum, for example, and their course offerings as well, or their instructional practices. So this was really just, not to get into the weeds per se, Mark, but just to kind of provide us that overview, that structure, and help guide us with those questions. So there could be a lot of overage, you know, I'm looking at underneath the Director of Business Services, central office staff, you know, within the CEC contract, it talks about specifically how the school district does provide those district office support staff, whether it's human resources, or budgeting, or evaluation support, so there's a lot of overage.
Buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, yeah, yeah, absolutely. So there's a lot of overage there. I just took it based off our conversation in terms of some of the questions that were brought up. So this isn't meant to supersede the contract by any stretch, or replace the contract by any stretch, this is just meant to help build more of a context, maybe for everybody to know roles and responsibilities between the different entities here, and certainly not an all-inclusive list of everybody's job duties and responsibilities. But I also know that many of our CEC Governance Council members aren't maybe as familiar with my job, or what I do, or what Lori is responsible for, or Steve, or Carl, that's why I kind of listed some of those highlights there. And as you notice, this chart is also, for the most part, listed in part of a board policy, Policy 250 1.1 as well, so I wanted to make sure that I was honoring that. Does that answer your question?
Mark Flait and I have a question as well. When you discussed this flow chart, or had your meeting with the CEC Governance Council, one of the big concerns, as I recall, on the meeting on the May 4th, was the whole concept of evaluation as it pertains to students and administrators and other members of the CEC. What did you get in terms of a readout from the CEC Governance Council in terms of assessment and evaluation? Who is really responsible for that?
So I haven't gotten there yet in this document, I was more, if there's questions on just this organizational chart, but we can certainly jump there.
Well, I didn't know if you were going to get to there or not, it was just one of the big concerns the other day, just wondering what your thoughts were on that.
I think since that is, you can give your thoughts, but as it's not on the agenda itself, we should have a very abbreviated discussion that way.
Just, it's part of that explanation, is what he's talking. Yeah, so are there any other questions with the organizational chart aspect of this document? Because then I'll move on to that hiring aspect of the document. Again, all CEC employees are employees of the school district of OPEC, therefore, it makes sense for that hiring process for all CEC employees to follow the same hiring process as school district of OPEC employees, with a couple of additions, as noted in the CEC contract in Sections 5.1 and 5.2. And that is really that a Governance Council member needs to be a part of the interview teams, and that is led, interview teams are led by a CEC Administrator, of course. My one recommendation in this area is that I would join the Governance Council President in leading up that interview process and team for the next CEC Administrator. And then, of course, the other process that is followed here is that all CEC staff members are approved first by the CEC Governance Council, before coming to the school district of OPEC, Board of Education for final approval. So that's just kind of a brief process, and then that next section is really about an effort to choose the best next leader of the CEC. Here's kind of a quick snapshot of the timeline of events. You know, I shared out with everybody the Google survey, and when I say everybody, that's the Board of Education, the school district of OPEC core team, the CEC Governance Council members. What I would like to do next, after today's meeting, would be also to share that survey out with CEC staff, parents, and students, particularly the upper-level students of grades five and six. And again, that survey really is about the positives, the changes that they would like to see, and then the characteristics of the next CEC leader. And then, once we get that survey information back, we need to take the time to analyze that, because as we've talked about before, is with every position that becomes available due to resignation or retirement, we need to evaluate that position to ensure that we're maximizing our resources. So would that mean, would we need to replace Ms. Hair with the same administrative roles and tasks, leading the CEC and also being the district 4K Administrator? Or do we look at doing something different, and say, there's enough work out in the CEC that the 4K administration needs to be shifted to somebody else within the district, meaning that somebody else would absorb those duties and responsibilities? Do we look at a lead teacher model with the charter school, as several charter schools do? Do we look at utilizing the CEC Governance Council Presidents differently in their operational or tactical roles within the CEC? Do we utilize myself differently as well? And so when I say analyze that feedback, that's really what we're looking to do, we're looking to see what are the positives, what are the strengths, what's the scope, what's the multitude of those, or the magnitude of those, and then really looking to determine what is the best path going forward with that. After deciding that CEC Administrator role, we need to create a job posting, and then, of course, go back to that hiring checklist and follow along with that. So any questions in that hiring process that's been outlined here?
Yes, Mark, this is Sandy. I do have some questions and some comments. I appreciate all the work that you've gone into this and the level of detail that you've provided to share the thoughts and the processes that you would recommend. I do, however, think that what you're asking us to approve makes substantial changes to the contract that we have in place, and that I would prefer that these brought, be brought forward, and for example, within the hiring right now, the language doesn't allow for a formal insertion of the Director of Teaching and Learning into the process, and it, when you get through some of even the hiring process that is outlined in the contract, I think these are some significant changes, and I would much prefer that these brought, these recommendations be brought forward as proposals for amendments to the contract, because I think they are significant, I think they do have an impact on the, the language that we ended up adopting, in part because of the requirements that we needed to meet to be eligible for the federal sub-grant. And so one of my suggestions would be that we get together with the DPI and talk about some of these, and see if we'd be jeopardizing our sub-grant. some of these, and see if we'd be jeopardizing our sub-grant.
Yeah, so let me, I should have been real clear from the get-go, Sandy. I'm not the expert.
And I'm having some instability with my computer.
Okay. So Sandy, I apologize for not being, getting a bit, getting a bit.
That's Sandy's background.
That, I'm not pretending to be the expert in the CEC contract either. What I did is I took information that was provided to me by the Board of Education and the CEC Governance Council at that last meeting, and worked with the contract as it is, some recommendations as we move forward. So what I, why I brought this to the CEC Governance Council first was kind of like the first swipe of it. They did make a motion and approved that this would be shared here with the School District of Opaaca Board of Education, as a motion to move forward with, as far as bridging some of those communication gaps that we experienced back on May 4th. So yes, may there need to be some changes to the CEC contract? Absolutely. I think that is probably a wise next step with that. But before bringing forth those-
And I appreciate that, Mark. Go ahead.
So before bringing forth any kind of a formal motion for those recommendations to the contract, I kind of wanted to outline what those changes may look like, based off my interpretation of the joint meeting that happened, you know, a little more than a week So the purpose of this document that was shared out with the Governance Council, and now the Board of Education, is to see, is our interpretation of the communication opportunities for improvement accurate, that we can take that next step of looking at those contract amendments?
All right, and I'm really sorry. I think I may try calling in. I seem to not be getting very good transmission here on my internet service. I did actually add more bandwidth today, but I am losing a lot of the conversation. Sorry.
Okay, if you can dial in, Sandy, we'd appreciate that. Do you have the number handy?
I will do that. I have that info, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is Pat, following up on Sandy as she's going to her phone. Mark Flayton, are you suggesting that this document be something that we adopt, or is this informational only?
Well, in terms of the next steps, you know, if we can agree to this document, then certainly we can get moving with that hiring process. And in the meantime, I can also bring forth some contractual recommended changes that, of course, would have to go through the Governance Council first before bringing it to the Board of Education. But if we wait for those contractual changes to be made to that CEC contract, then we're also putting on hold the hiring process for the next CEC leader. So my recommendation would be that, yeah, that the Board would approve these recommended changes, knowing that there will also be forthcoming amendments to the CEC contract, so that we can get moving on with hiring that next CEC leader.
Sandy, are you connected yet? I can still see your computer, but I can't tell if you're-
She just joined.
Oh, let's be accurate. Sandy, I don't know if you can hear me, but have you been able to dial in? Looks like she may still be trying. I think, Mark, part of what Sandy's point is, and we'll see if that's indeed the case, is by formally adopting this plan, the degree to which there could be some uncertain interpretation of the contract itself, it's hard for us to adopt it if it is able to be interpreted in conflict with the contract. So while we might have this as an agreeable general format, and it looks like Sandy has just joined again now, this may be a generally agreeable format to actually adopt it as a formal process, if it is in, if it is in contradiction in any way, shape, or form with the contract itself could be problematic. Sandy, it looks like you have joined again?
Have, yes, I have, Steve. And I heard the last of what you said, but I didn't hear before that. I'm very sorry.
Well, I was trying to bridge the gap while you were signing in, and it was that while I don't think the Board has any overall concerns with going forward of the transition plan in which the district itself and our administration is able to provide support and assistance in any way prudent to the CEC to formally adopt a plan that could have elements that are in contradiction with the contract itself, and asking them to proceed before the contract is amended could be problematic.
I agree, and certainly, I don't mean to suggest that there should be no relationship and that it shouldn't be anything but a strong relationship between the CEC and the rest of the district. I would like all of us to be strong partners together. And so your thought about support and expertise offered by the district for the CEC Governance Council sounds wonderful.
Okay, certainly, it's appropriate for the CEC and the school district as a whole to get moving on this. We certainly don't want to do it in any way, shape, or form that is in violation with the contract. So what I would like to suggest is that this is informational, and that we assure that we do not move forward in any way, shape, or form that is in contradiction with the contract, but that we reassure the CEC Governance Council that the district and our administrative group will give them all the support that we can in the process.
Steve, if I could, I just want to make it clear, I don't know if that was clear enough, the Governance Council has approved this and recommends that this get presented to the school board.
I understand that. I just don't want to necessarily have it adopted at this meeting if there are any elements that could be interpreted as being in conflict with the contract. That doesn't mean that we don't provide all the support we possibly can. So I think personally, having reviewed the transition plan, I think it's a good viable plan. We just have to administer it within the context and in compliance with the contract with the CEC.
So for clarity's sake, before moving forward, because in the contract, it doesn't have the Director of Teaching and Learning doing any of the hiring process or any evaluation process, which we'll talk about later. So before that would move forward, we'd like to see the contract amended to match what this plan is outlined.
Well, if, and if we wanted delays initiating some of the process to get the amendments to the contract done, we can certainly do that, assuming that we get approval of that those amendments past the regulators in particular. Because we do know that with the initial round with the contract and a couple additional rounds, it took some time. And I would hate to have what's happening in a process of trying to adopt some of those changes delay us.
We're just trying to provide clarity so that we can move forward as swiftly as we can to get a replacement in place and continue to have the conversations about the contract. This is to guide us through this transition, I guess, how administration is looking at it, not that this is set in stone and it's going to be like this forever.
Well, and I guess that's what I'm saying. If we use this as a general framework and the elements of it are not in violation of the contract, regardless of what the CEC Governance Council may have said the other evening, because I'm not sure if they did or didn't look at all aspects of this in specific light of the contract. I would like us to move forward, there's no question. I'm not trying to delay that. I just want to make sure that we proceed in a process and a way that is not, will not be construed or interpreted as a violation of our contract. And if we have to amend the contract later to be able to codify or adopt some of these more formally, by all means, we do that. But we can't use this as a document to modify or amend the contract. Does that provide some level of clarity? Sandy, are you okay with that as well?
That's exactly my position as well, Steve. And I just want us to be very careful about this, and we may want to consult with the DPI to ask questions and get clarity with regard to the grant, but I think that would be an important piece as well. I just think we have a contract in place for a reason, and if we're going to make changes to the contract, we need to follow the formal process that's outlined in the contract.
Correct. At the same time, if there is a level of ambiguity in the contract, there are some ways to work with, with the contract and the plan. So we will make sure that we do not proceed in a way that is in conflict with the contract. And I will not be looking for a formal, discuss those, but I'm not looking for a motion to adopt. I am, however, looking for a consensus that we do indeed move forward.
Well, we will be moving forward, and I think it's clear that everyone needs to know it will be in violation of the contract, because the contract is vague.
If the portions of the contract that are vague, we are not in violation of it.
But there are portions of the contract that are very specific with regard to hiring and with regard to even evaluation.
Okay. In order to keep this meeting moving along, I'm not looking for a formal adoption of this plan. We will review the contract again to make sure that whatever we do moving forward with the transition, that we are in compliance with the contract.
Yep. So 4.5 does talk about that, in that all CEC's school staff members will be employees of the School District of Opaaca, will follow all employee practices and policies of the School District of Opaaca, and be subject to appropriate contractual agreements. So again, we have a hiring process in place at the School District of Opaaca, hiring process which was linked to that document. It's just my level of involvement in that, and again, I think that's why there's some ambiguity in terms of who is leading that and who's supporting that. So, you know, again, that's why I started with the Governance Council, to make sure that they knew my level, my desire to support them in this process. So, you know, we'll make sure we're sticking with that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Moving along with this document, then there's an expectations of support, and I guess this isn't touched on at all in the contract, but as part of the School District of Opaaca, new onboarding of employees, and just how we do business, I think, as well. You know, we've had new CEC teachers who have been a part of the onboarding and support mentoring network. So we just wanted to clarify that, that with a new CEC Administrator or lead teacher, or whatever that decision has reached, there's going to be a plan of support. You know, at the present moment, some of the key factors of support and guidance include, but are not limited to, again, these are based off our conversations, planning long-term and short-term pertaining to the CEC building-wide and specific-wide, communication to staff, parents, Governance Council, Core Team, Board of Education, positive and proactive collaboration between the CEC and School District of Opaaca staff, aligned to both the vision, mission, and goals of the School District of Opaaca and the CEC, of course, growth mindset focused on continuous improvement and sustainability. Again, we're not saying that those things weren't happening, we're saying that in terms of that focus of support, those would be kind of my marching orders and working with this new CEC leader. No different than my work with previous administrators in the district that were new to the district. Any questions there on that area? Okay, then, the evaluation of the CEC Administrator, and of course, this would be a recommendation because this is different from the contract, which we know would need to be brought forth in a separate. But again, my conversation, and going back to your question, Mr. Fair, with the CEC Governance Council, it was a very productive conversation, and I think a very positive conversation. And I really believe that from an equity standpoint and a sense of consistency in our school administrators and our expectations, that there was kind of a sense of relief. You know, I still have an observation and evaluation that I knew with Ms. Hare in this year, and same as last year, but part of that was probably because we have a chain out there as well. And so the chain is, as of next year, won't be in existence, it'll be the Chain Exploration Center. So, yeah, we do need to clarify this. And so I did lay this out there again to them and offered up my suggestions to them. And yes, I understand that this would be a change to the contract, but again, I would reiterate that the CEC Governance Council did approve, you know, approve, quote unquote, this language, so they are accepting of these changes. And of course, these changes would have to be made formally, but at this point in time, again, this was kind of like that first swipe language. Before bringing forth a formal recommendation for this, that's why it's being brought forth as it is today. You know, we don't have a CEC committee like we have a personnel committee or a finance committee. Typically, this sort of information, these conversations, would be run through a committee first, and then the committee would adopt or choose to adopt or modify the recommendation of the administration, and then it would be brought forth to the right boards. And so, again, I just want to be really clear, that's why this information was being brought forth here, kind of more from a committee level, conversational level, nothing that needs to be formally approved. And again, knowing that this would mean potentially some changes to the contract, those contracts would have to be amended to reflect that. But before we did that work, it was, are we in gentleman's agreement, quote unquote, that we're heading down the right direction, that the notes effectively captured the communication opportunities that we had?
I believe they do, and Pat, as you ran that meeting on the 4th, I would love you to also gather your thought as to whether or not this is addressing in many ways some of the concerns that were raised in that meeting, realizing that any of those concerns ultimately, if being addressed in a way different than stated in the contract, would require a contract amendment. But as a general template, if you will, and I usually try to resist using the word template, but I will in this case, do you feel, Pat, that this generally covers a lot of the concerns that were expressed in that meeting?
Yeah, yes, I do, Steve, absolutely. The concerns that I heard, and again, I wrote a lot of notes, I didn't, I don't have them in front of me, but you're absolutely right. I think the idea of hiring a new administrative person, the idea of evaluation, both administrative administrators evaluations and staff evaluations, was something that the Governance Council was not sure how to handle, if I can say that correctly. And they had their own concerns about that and how both groups could work and should work together to make that the best, make it as easy as possible. And I think you're absolutely right. I think we need to move in this direction. I think the document that Mark has put forward is probably spot-on, but as Sandy has pointed out, and Steve pointed out, it doesn't conform to our existing contract, so we're going to have to, we're going to have to do something about that sort of ASAP. And I just, my final question to Mark is, Flayton, Mark, how do you see yourself as this, the teacher, or the Director of Teaching and Learning, involved with the present contract in the hiring and evaluation? Do you have any role at all, from your perspective, without these changes?
I guess I'll respond to that, Pat, in part, and that is, we as a district and as a Board have affirmed and reaffirmed a number of times our full support for the charter school, and anything that we can do to help while within the boundaries- school, and anything that we can do to help, while within the boundaries of the contract, to help them moving forward, whether it's with regard to general hiring processes, best practices, et cetera, or anything else. Certainly, he's been very involved from a curriculum standpoint, they get to choose that by and large with the autonomy that they are granted. However, Mark, with the probable exception of I play the violin in Suzuki, can be instrumental in providing them with support and assistance. I don't know if that, I just, I'm going to answer that way, Pat, because I don't want to put him in a awkward position of what his thoughts of what he can and should be doing might be with understanding the boundaries that may be placed in the charter and the autonomy required for the CEC.
That's fine, if that's where we want to leave it, that's fine. I think that the questions that have been brought up on this document and by some of the board members are basic to our agreement between the two, and I think we need to resolve these, and we're not going to do it tonight, obviously, because we're not even going to adopt formally this document, but, you know, I heard Mark say, you know, a gentleman's agreement, I'm not quite sure what that means in terms of moving forward if it goes against the charter, we really want to do that, or if we don't, or if we don't want to go against the charter, how are we going to find out that information in a timely fashion so that we can move forward with our hiring? I don't know how to answer any of those questions, but I think we're going to have to have some more dialogue on this before we move much further, because we're not going to be able to solve all of those tonight, we're going to have to get some more expertise. So those are my comments.
We can get legal involved to the degree we need to, to make sure we are not in conflict. I hate that expense, I will also ask Sandy to contact me so we can delve into the portions of the contract that she has specific concerns about, but I think, Pat, from Mark saying a gentleman's agreement, I think what we have is a general structure that the CEC is comfortable with, but in the next day or two, we will get resolution to what is or isn't in specific contradiction or violation of the contract.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Pat, if I could just answer your question maybe a little bit differently, too, I hope you got a sense, number one, from the language within this document, I'm all in in terms of supporting any one of our schools.
And I believe that fully, Mark, in fact, I think that your support in this particular, in this document and the ideas that are put forth are invaluable, and I think that that's something that we have to talk about, because I think your participation, as you pointed out in here, is something that both groups need desperately to get the right people on board and the right evaluations.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anything else with regard to this, understanding that there are a couple of items pending further review? Okay, it would be remiss if I didn't at this time also, on behalf of the district, thank Ms. Fair for all that she has done for us, for the district as a whole, and more recently, obviously, the CEC. Rhonda, you've been instrumental in shaping much of what we have done, especially with the CEC, but even prior to that with some of the items that you've been involved with, and we are very thankful and appreciative of all of those contributions, and we certainly wish you the very best as you transition to whatever your next opportunity or opportunities And with that, our thanks, so.
Thank you, Steve, it was my pleasure, and it was an honor.
Well, an honor is a strong word, it is, I believe, our honor to have all of you doing what you do for us, so, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Steve Hackett, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second by Betty, any discussion? There being none, roll call, please.
Hi.
Betty Mannion.
Yes.
Pat Fair.
Aye.
Michael Binsky.
Aye.
Sandy Robinson.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. I'm just going through. Do you have anything else on?
Oh, we did, yes, we have two other things under administration.
We do have two other items under administration that appeared to a degree that they were under the consent agenda, but-
Yeah, these are both action items, the approval of the graduating senior class Mr. Robowski put together, and this is just a typical agenda item for the month of May. So we're looking for a motion and a second to approve the list of graduating seniors for the class of 2020.
Okay, you have that document as part of the board packet dated May 5.
I'll make a motion, this is Pat, I'll make a motion that we accept the list of graduating seniors for 2020, but I would also just ask, do we have a definitive number?
I didn't count them up here.
I didn't count them either.
Last count, it was about 180.
My motion will include everybody on the list.
Second. Motion and second, is there any discussion? Take a voice vote.
Aye.
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 Abstentions? Very much.
The last item under Administration Part C is the 2021 WIAA Membership Renewal. As you know, the last several years, the WIAA is not charging a membership fee to districts. This is due later in the summer, but since we received it, we thought we would add it to this agenda. It's an annual item that you guys, it's brought forward to the board. So the recommendation is to approve the School District of Opaca's membership in the WIAA for the 2021 school year.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, that was Mark with a motion.
Yep.
And Steve Hackett with a second.
Yes.
Any discussion? There being none, I'll take a voice vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Okay, anything else before I entertain a motion to go into closed session?
Nothing.
Okay, and do we have a separate connection for closed session?
We do, we have a separate link.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to turn into closed session.
So moved.
That was Dale.
Second.
Second by Sandy.
Yes.
Okay, and that's to move into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin statutes 19.85 print 1 print C to consider employment promotion compensation or promotion or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and Wisconsin statute 19.85 print 1 print F to consider financial, medical, social, or personnel histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. We are adjourning to specifically discuss a personnel issue. With that, roll call.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Betty Mannion.
Yes.
Adam Fair.
Aye.
Michael Binsky.
Aye.
Sandy Robinson.
Yes.
Dale Bell.
Yes.
Steve Johnson.
Yes.